Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ward Four City Council Candidate Forum organized by the League of Women Voters St. Paul. My name is Max Sanders and I'm a member of the League. If you're interested in learning more about or joining the League of Women Voters, please stop by the registration table after the forum. We appreciate the St. Paul Neighborhood Network for providing the studio, filming this forum, and live streaming it to YouTube tonight. The League also extends our gratitude to tonight's forum cosponsors, the Union Park District Council and the Midway Chamber of Commerce. Both have helped to heavily promote attendance at this event, as we can see, with their members and have volunteers here tonight. A quick orientation to the building, restrooms are out the back door to the left, water's also available. I'm gonna start closing remarks at around 8:15, so we end the forum promptly at 8:30, but you are welcome to mingle with the candidates after the forum. The League of Women Voters St. Paul conducts candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to our community. The League is a nonpartisan organization. We do not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. Local leagues and the League of Minnesota post complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes, and we ask that those in the audience refrain from taking photos or videos tonight. All four candidates were given rules of the forum, including no campaign or promotional materials, signs, or political clothing in the studio. Each agreed to the following format. Candidates will have two minutes each for opening and closing statements, and one minute to respond to each question. If a candidate wants a chance at a rebuttal, they may ask for it, and will be given 30 seconds. Candidates are allowed a maximum of three rebuttals. Questions. I get this question a lot. I made a grid to ensure that all four candidates have an equal chance to answer in every possible position. When the candidates are making opening and closing statements, timers will lift their signs to notify the speaker when they have 30 and 15 seconds remaining, and when they must stop speaking. When candidates are answering questions, the timers will lift their signs to signify that 15 seconds are left, and when they must stop speaking. Our timers tonight are Lea and Beatrice. Let's give a hand for Lea and Beatrice. All right. We've collected online questions for the candidates, and audience members in the studio here can write questions on the paper provided on your seats. Hold up your completed card, and a volunteer will retrieve it. Those will be sorted by our question screening committee to ensure similar questions are grouped together. We had a huge number of questions submitted online, so we'll do our best to respect all the people, both here and watching the livestream as well. Remember, your question must be directed to all the candidates. It cannot be of a personal nature, and it should be relevant to the position of city council member. No hostile or inappropriate questions will be considered. Since the election on August 12th is in the ranked choice format, please consider all the candidates and their answers. You'll have the chance to vote for your first choice, but also pick a second and third choice on your ballot. I'd urge the studio audience to be as quiet as possible so we can all hear, and hold your applause until the end to allow as much time as possible for the candidates to speak. That completes the instructions. Now it's time to make sure all of your phones are off so we can start. I am pleased to introduce our candidates for Ward Four City Council. To my immediate left, Chantel Allen, Molly Coleman, Cole Hanson, Carolyn Will. Welcome to you all. We are first gonna start with two-minute opening statements, starting with the candidate closest to my left. Chantel Allen, please begin.
Well, hello, everyone. My name is Chantel Allen. I am a Ward Four resident, obviously. This is my second term on the St. Paul School Board, and I've learned a lot about governance in that process. When I first ran to get on the school board, one of the things that I learned about and wanted to carry with me was co-governance. And I practiced that by working with community and having conversations, really pushing in around community engagement and how we engage with community. And I'm really proud of that. I got on the school board because I started working in the public schools straight out of high school, about 20 years. I love children. I coached 10 years in the park and rec system, led that team to a championship at St. Paul Central High School. Beyond that, I've done a lot of community outreach and community safety work. I'm one of the co-founders of Black Lives Matter Twin Cities, and so I believe in community safety. I believe in us coming together to really address some of the issues. And one of the things I think I'm a little thrown off today because I was just talking to some of the other candidates about something, so I'm gonna suspend my full introduction to talk to you about just something I'm having personal going on, but something I think you guys really care about. So I live in the Midway area, and just yesterday, I've been away on a trip, and I opened up a letter from DSI that was concerned, that were concerned about some leaves that were growing in my backyard. They wanted to charge me $425 an hour to remove those leaves. Late last night, the nuisance had actually exploded in my backyard, across my alley, and someone got shot. My concern is, why aren't we putting those kind of codes and regulations on business owners that allow violence and things to happen in the area? Why is it so easy for them to continue to function, but yet they come at me at $425 an hour for leaves?
Thank you, Chantel. Molly?
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and thank you to the League and the Union Park District Council, the Midway Chamber, and SPNN for hosting us. For those I haven't yet had the chance to meet, my name is Molly Coleman. I am born and raised in St. Paul and a proud, proud product of our St. Paul Public Schools. And I now have the privilege of living with my husband and raising our son here in Midway. For the last seven years, I have worked as the executive director of a national legal advocacy organization that focuses on economic justice and democracy reform. And when I think about why run for St. Paul City Council, why did I get into this race, three things are top of mind for me. First is that I love the city of St. Paul. I truly believe that there is no better city in which to raise a family and build a life. And I know that we have a lot of work ahead of us if we are going to make that equally true for every single member of our community. The second is economic justice. How do we build a city in this moment when the needs are so high, when we have the financial realities that we do in our city, that truly builds towards deep economic justice for every single member of our community, so that every person in the city of St. Paul knows that their basic needs are being met? And the third is this concept of democracy. How do we, in this moment, restore faith in the belief that government can be part of the solution, that our local government can actively make people's lives better, that we can be responsive to the very real concerns that we see and hear throughout Ward Four? So I'm running for St. Paul City Council to attempt to build this city that we love into an even stronger and better version of itself, and I look forward to your questions and to continuing this conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Cole?
Hi, folks. I gotta be close to the mic. Hi, folks. My name is Cole Hanson. I'm a dad of a proud St. Paul Public Schools incoming first grader at Adams Elementary, a public health educator and dietitian at the University of Minnesota at the St. Paul Campus. And I've been a community organizer, neighbor, do a little bit of everything-er here in the Midway for almost 15 years since I moved here in 2009. I grew up about an hour and some change north of here on the farm with horses, and I was taught, growing up, that you can do whatever you like so long as you get your chores done. And that's why I'm running, because we are looking at a moment in our city where the chores have simply not been getting done. We look at our streets, and our streets are not necessarily taken care of the way that we would be expecting them to be taken care of, and that's with snow or lacking any snow. My focus is on an affordable city, a safer city, an innovative city, and a fair city, where you get a fair shake from the Department of Safety and Inspections, where if you have a concern about someone on the light rail, you can call 911 and know that you're not gonna be risking their life. You can reach them with something that could save their life. Now, I'm a public health educator. Public health crosses all sorts of professions, and an example is the light rail. It's the largest environmental investment in our community, and if we don't feel safe to ride it, we're missing out on two important assets here. So when we talk about what we're doing here in St. Paul, I'm here to get the chores done, and I'm here to do them alongside you. You know, as an organizer, as somebody in this community, we've been picking up trash for the last six months of my campaign time, because that's the sort of candidate I'm intending to be and council member I'm intending to be. I'm not gonna be living at City Hall, I need to be standing right here in Ward Four alongside you and making sure you come with us to City Hall, because it's a lot worse without you. Thank you.
Thank you, Cole. Carolyn?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Will, and thank you also to all the hosts, League of Women Voters, SPNN, Midway Chamber, and Union Park. I am honored to be here as a candidate of Ward Four. I love St. Paul. I've lived here for 33 years. I have lived in four different wards, but the last 20-some years I've been in Miriam Park. I wanted to just make one thing clear off the start. I am not political legacy. I, this is the first time I've ever run for any office, and so not into political theater. I just want to roll up my sleeves and get to work for all of you. My work has focused on community. I came here as a reporter, TV reporter, worked for several different stations, and then I segued into strategic public relations. I find that my reporting skills are coming into play a lot with the door knocking, but as a reporter, you like to spotlight the issues and hoping that the government or society or whatever comes in and helps resolve that issue you've brought to light. Then as a public relations professional, as I am now, you form those strategic partnerships, you engage with community, you motivate people to take action, and so it's those skills that I would be bringing to this position. And I am just wondering how much time I have left. 30 seconds. All right, I'm gonna try and tell just this story that keeps coming through my memory with the announcement of Cub Foods Midway closing. I witnessed the most beautiful scene that I think speaks volumes. A few years back, I was getting my state fair tickets, and there was a gentleman there, you know, he could go to the cash wiring booth, and he was wiring money home. It was the end of the week. And I'm waiting, and then he decides, he reaches back, "Oh, shoot, I'm gonna have to give you part two to this story in my closing," because it's a really good story.
All right. Chantel, Chantel, we're gonna start with you for this first question. There are a number of empty or abandoned commercial buildings and properties in Ward Four, excuse me, in downtown and along Grand Avenue. Additionally, we just learned that the Cub Foods in Midway will be shutting down. What ideas do you have to attract commerce to St. Paul? How would you turn these ideas into action to invigorate St. Paul's economy and expand its economic base?
Well, we need to start investing in our small businesses. We need to invest in the people that are right here in St. Paul and have been here in St. Paul for a long time. I know that there's a lot of money going into some big projects downtown, the Excel Center and all the big projects, right? And I think what we need to do is really put those dollars into where our pot of gold is. I always talk about this on the school board, but in the city, in our school district, we speak 144 languages. And almost every tourist city are people who are able to draw people in for big spaces like soccer games, right? Because soccer games are far and few between in each state, people who are able to draw in people like that to their state, they highlight the culture in their city. You see Chinatown, you see the Latinx spaces where they're offering all of that culture. We have that same culture right here in our city, but we have to invest in it. We have to stop suppressing it.
Molly?
So, to my mind, one of the foundational challenges facing the city of St. Paul is our small and shrinking tax base. When we don't bring in the tax revenue that we need, it prevents us from being able to invest in the programs, the services, the type of city that we want to see. So bringing in that new investment, that new development, has to be a top priority for the entire city council. What's going to work downtown is not going to be the same as what works in Midway. Downtown, we're having lots of conversations around office-to-residential conversions and bringing big businesses or medium-sized businesses back into our urban core. So I want to spend my last 30 seconds talking specifically about what I think we need to do in Midway. The biggest challenge when it comes to vacant buildings in Midway is the vacant CVS on Sterling and University. We have had three years of a building sitting empty, making sure that the city uses every single tool at its disposal to force the building owners to sell that building so that we can build literally anything else there, has to be a first priority.
Cole?
Thank you. When we consider doing business in St. Paul, I've spoken to a large number of business owners, it's just kind of a pain to follow the rules. That's not because the rules don't matter, it's because they don't feel like they're consistently applied. You know, I'll tell you, I've called to get an inspection from the City Department of Inspections. Anybody who has tried for their own home knows, you gotta call between around 7:00 and 9:00, and then maybe you leave a message, and hopefully you get a call back before your permit expires. I scheduled my haircut on my phone. We need to think about how do we bring regular city processes that are just expectations in any modern city to 2025. I shouldn't be leaving voicemails, and certainly business owners shouldn't be wrestling with the Department of Safety and Inspections when they're trying to do the right thing. Put forums online. Make them accessible to our business owners in multiple languages, because we've got a lot of them who would really like to bring their innovative ideas to our city, if only we met them halfway.
Carolyn?
I think we need to focus on some very, very basic things, and that is clean up the streets, clean up the parking lots, clean up public areas, and create more safety. Let's focus on providing more vigilant community policing, which I just had a few conversations today with some police officers, and they said that they are leaning into the community policing, and it does seem to work. We do need to have that feeling of safety. And beautiful streets, let's clean it up, make them safe, and then focus on making them beautiful, well-maintained streets. Our do-hold economic value. And after that, I'd say lean into showcasing our amazing cultural diversity. We are so lucky, just in Ward Four, I think we are more diverse than any of the other wards.
Carolyn, we're gonna stick with you for this next question. The struggle between the mayor's office and the city council about how to handle the FCC truck facility in the West Seventh Neighborhood raises concerns about the ability of the council and the mayor's office to govern effectively. How would you cultivate dialogue and working relationships with the mayor's office, other parts of city government, and other levels of county and state government?
Again, in my field, we always start with research. You've gotta understand where everybody's coming from, what their goals are, what their priorities are, before you're going to be able to establish any common ground or common values. You can't just continue to argue and, you know, dig in your heels. So I think really, doing the research, educating all parties, understanding each one's priorities does help build consensus after a while. So it doesn't help to just stop talking and hold to your position. So I'm all about consensus building, and I do believe that the, I had some friends who were working quite diligently that lived down on West Seventh, and they just didn't feel like their voices were amounting to much, and so I really do feel like the community, the residents down there, their voices needed to be heard as well.
Chantel?
I didn't know I was up next.
The grid.
I'm gonna have to agree. I mean, it really does come down to, because we're talking about negotiations, and it really does come down to really understanding all parties and what they're trying to achieve in this situation, and listening. You know, a lot of times in negotiations, we're just like, "Here's our bottom line. Here's what we can do. Here's what we have, and here's..." You know, but really listen to what the issues are, because often there'll be another way to resolve it, rather than everybody sticking to A, B, C, and D. Sometimes there's halfway points that we can make and negotiate, and I think it really has to come down to building good relationships where we can trust one another as we move through that. The city council and the mayor, they've gotta get on the same page. We've gotta get into a position where we're all working for the better of St. Paul, and we have a very similar vision. Now, how we get there is gonna be very different, but we've gotta have the same vision around success.
Molly?
Governing is fundamentally about relationship building, and I will say, I have not had a single person in the entirety of this campaign say to me, "I hope you're gonna get to City Hall and really stick it to those other council members. I hope you're really gonna butt heads with the mayor and waste a lot of our time." That is not what anybody wants, and I will pick up on something that Chantel said, which is that we are lucky in the city of St. Paul that we start from a place of very shared values with the vast majority of folks in City Hall, at the county level, in our legislative delegation. We have a shared vision for where we want to go. We might not always agree, but I think that we are starting far further ahead of the field than in many other cities. So to me, you know, you start off by having a basic amount of respect for everybody who chooses to go into public service. From there, you work on the issues that folks care about, you build the relationships, you recognize that every day is going to be a new day. We might not have agreed on what we worked on yesterday, but tomorrow is a new day. Let's start fresh, and let's prioritize that relationship building with everybody in City Hall.
Cole?
I think council and the mayor's office and government is best when it's listening to its residents. And I'm glad you brought up the trash example, because I gotta say, the council did its work in uplifting and elevating the voices of that neighborhood and their neighborhood plan. Those of us who've been involved at district councils know that neighborhood plans, these large documents that are spent, you take years to put them together, are all built on community feedback and engagement. And so the city council did a really good job in elevating the work of those neighbors there. I think that's what it comes down to, is knowing who your constituency is and being a good listener, because that's the only way you can reflect what they need in the conversations you're going to. You know, whether it's been moderating forums over Kimball Court or leading my bargaining unit at the U, tough conversations happen all the time. But the difference is, do you know where you are? Do you know where your values are? And do you know what's gonna be best for the folks you represent? That's the benefit of engagement. That's the benefit of sitting and living with these challenges that everybody else does every day.
Cole, we're gonna stick with you for this next question. Construction on and around St. Thomas campus has led to tension between the university and neighborhood residents. How would you mediate those tensions?
Well, I think it's a little bit of everybody coming to the table. I mean, again, I mentioned, you know, I've moderated some pretty dicey forums around supportive housing in the community, but there's something to be said about people taking a chance to meet with people from the other side. What I don't think is successful is digging trenches, digging foxholes, and getting ready to lob this or that. Now, I think that also means St. Thomas coming to the table to help support our city and making sure that we can make the adjustments and improvements we need to for a changing part of St. Paul. You know, at this point, you know, and I'll talk about it a little bit, but the copilot program, Payment in Lua Taxes, is all about bringing our colleges in St. Paul to help pay for this thing we call St. Paul, when at this point, there's not even an option to. So when we talk about making improvements around construction and the roads and traffic flow and parking and housing and housing and housing, how do we make sure everybody's at the table to make those changes and make those improvements for everybody? That's my job. That's what I do, and I'm looking forward to doing it here.
Carolyn?
I think it comes down to balance. We just really all need to focus on what's going to maintain the balance. We have a neighborhood that drew St. Thomas to establish themselves and grow there, and drawing more and more students that want to live near campus. It used to be such a commuter college, and now the students want to live nearby. And so now we have all this new development going on, and the development is not necessarily have any longevity to it. I think, I don't know how many people know about this, but there's 17 new buildings that have gone up in this very tight neighborhood area that doesn't have any parking. They're just rooms with one galley kitchen, so it would never be an apartment at the end, so that's not balanced. And St. Thomas, I think, could be helping relieve the parking pressure by opening up their parking ramp to those students.
Chantel? Sure can. Construction on and around St. Thomas campus has led to tension between the university and neighborhood residents. How would you mediate those tensions?
Well, everybody needs to come to the table, and then I think that St. Thomas needs to offer an apology for not bringing the community to the table in the first place. We have to get to a place where we can have communication about the issues. And through that apology, hopefully they'll recognize the problems that they've created with traffic and some of the dangerous situations that they've kind of created in this process, right? And through that, we'll allow the community to have input as they continue to expand. I wanna see higher education grow in the city, of course, but I also want to preserve our city, and we have a lot of beautiful properties in our city, and I'm concerned about them being torn down and just little crackerjack boxes being put up. And so I think that it requires a conversation from everybody, and we need to get at the table and make it happen.
Molly?
Over the course of this campaign, I have heard consistently from neighbors in Miriam Park that they feel abandoned by the city, and they feel like St. Thomas does not care about the impact that the university has on their neighborhood. So I want to say first and foremost that the city, in addition to working with St. Thomas, needs to step up to better support the neighbors who live in that neighborhood. I've been hearing from folks that they call the city about parking violations and unsafe traffic situations that have been created, and the city says, "We'll call St. Thomas about that." That is unacceptable. If there are St. Thomas students who are in the neighborhood, who are in our community, then the city needs to take responsibility for that. And there are a number of situations in which St. Thomas needs to do more, and it is incumbent upon city leadership to bring them to the table. So a couple of things. First is, St. Thomas is now a D1 school. They should not be compared to McAllister, they should be compared to the University of Minnesota. The University of Minnesota does significantly more to ensure the safety of the community, to ensure the safety of the students, and that's the type of thing we need to expect of St. Thomas.
Molly, we're gonna stick with you for this next question. It's around property taxes. We received multiple questions concerning St. Paul's residential property taxes, with residents concerned about recent and potential future increases. Do you believe that the residential tax burden in St. Paul is too high? Why or why not? How would you address residents' concerns about their property taxes?
So I started my opening remarks with mention of how I focus on economic justice. That is the work that I do. And when we talk about property taxes, I view it through the framework of economic justice. We cannot constantly ask our homeowners and our renters, because those costs are passed on, to pay more and more and more, because it is not tenable, and I hear it all the time from folks in neighborhoods throughout Ward Four, "The situation is not tenable." The reality is, this is happening because of our collapsing tax base. We have lost $20 million and counting in tax revenue from downtown St. Paul alone, and that cost is being redistributed to folks throughout the city, and it's resulting in higher costs for all of us. There are a number of tools that the city has in order to grow our tax base, bringing in the development, bringing in the new investment, working with the state to ensure that we receive our fair share of local government aid, is all going to be essential in order to alleviate the burden of property taxes on folks throughout the city.
Cole?
So at the thousand-plus doors I've knocked, property taxes come up in every one of those conversations, too. Folks are seeing themselves crushed, crushed, under property taxes. Someone walked out with their statement, 65% year-over-year, and they didn't get a new kitchen. We have to do something to look at revenue in this city. We need new revenue. And I'm gonna tell you, there are five private colleges in our city, St. Thomas, St. Kate's, McAllister, Concordia, and Hamlin University, I'm a graduate of the last one, that pay nothing into our city. They own $740 million worth of real estate and do not contribute beyond the standard assessments around lights. What I'm asking for is 1 and 1/4%, that's the effective Ramsey County tax rate, on their estimated property values, that would bring $9 million a year into the city. That would have fixed our budget problems last year and saved you all a haircut on your property taxes, and it would solve our budget problems this year, too.
Carolyn?
Agreed that door knocking, you hear property taxes come up all the time. Just the other day in the West Como neighborhood, I spoke to a woman who'd been in her home for 31 years, raised four children. She has two St. Paul firefighters amongst her grown children, and she said, "My two sons cannot buy a house in St. Paul. They're going to have to move to the..." "My two sons cannot buy a house in St. Paul, they're going to have to move to the suburbs." And, um, you hear that story repeated and repeated. Um, I guess, I also came across some new information today that we have the highest property taxes, and the state revenue department assesses tax-stressed households. Anybody paying more than five percent in property taxes of their taxable income. We have seventeen percent who are tax-stressed in St. Paul. That's gonna be a new buzzword, tax-stressed. And we don't wanna be number one in the state for these kinds of things anymore. We wanna be number one in eighth grade reading scores and math scores.
Chantel?
Do this, but can you ask the question again?
Sure can. Uh, we received multiple questions concerning St. Paul's residential property taxes with residents concerned about recent and potential future increases. Do you believe that the residential tax burden in St. Paul is too high? Why or why not? How would you address residents' concerns about their property taxes?
So yes, I do think that the tax burden is too high, and that is one of the reasons why I'm running for city council, because I know that a percentage of that tax burden comes from the St. Paul schools. And I don't know if you guys have heard, we've made an announcement, but the St. Paul schools is in need of more dollars. And that cannot be the long game. We are not, I mean, and when I think about this, it's not just the schools that are suffering, it's our parking wrecks that are suffering. You guys know my heart is in children and youth. Um, it's our community safety programs that are suffering. Um, and we can't, the long game cannot just be continuing to tap homeowner, homeowners. Um, the candidates here all brought up a lot of the reasons why we're in this situation. I don't think that this is okay. How are we gonna fix the problem? We're gonna have to generate other revenue. We have the soccer stadium going on, we're talking about the, uh, hotel. How do we build out that beautiful pot of gold in that area so people are excited about coming into our city and spending their dollars?
Chantel, we're gonna stick with you for this next question. The city has approved construction of an off-road bike trail on Summit Avenue, a major east-west route, but a citizens' group is now threatening to sue the city under Minnesota environmental laws to stop construction, claiming in part that it would result in the loss of mature trees. What is your position on the Summit Avenue Bike Trail project?
Loss of trees. I don't wanna lose any trees. Um, but I also want to create a bikeable city. And so I think we need to have a conversation with the residents about creating a bikeable city, whether they like bikes. I don't like, I don't like riding bikes. That's not my jam. But I do understand how it benefits our environment, and I understand how it benefits our residents in our city, and so I'd be, I'm sure that the residents in that area would be willing to sit down and address that issue. Um, and I think we need to really, again, negotiate. Come to an understanding. We need to have bike lanes, we need to have a bikeable city, because we can't just keep getting more and more cars in our city. That's not gonna be the answer for our environmental situations either. And so, that's it.
Carolyn?
I am in favor of a more creative solution for safe biking on Summit. That's not even the most risky. I'd say, we need safe biking, because I do bike, I bike a lot. Bike to church, grocery store, to meetings. Um, we need a better north-south route. So I, the, the whole focus on Summit Avenue, when it already does have a three-foot trail and could easily be expanded to a four or five-foot in sections. Um, but what I'm against with the current plan is that it will take down nine hundred and fifty trees conservatively. It will widen the motorist lane by two feet, and it's going to close cross streets on the west end, other than Snelling, Fairview, Cleveland, and Creighton. So it's gonna return Summit to how it was in the seventies and earlier, where it was more just a motorway. And Summit is a huge draw, it's iconic. And I think we need to be more creative in how we address the changes.
Molly?
So when it comes to Summit Avenue, we have a once-in-a-century challenge and a once-in-a-century opportunity. The challenge is that the infrastructure underneath Summit is a hundred years old. We have pipes that are posing an active risk to the safety and the life of folks in this neighborhood. So the city and Public Works have made the decision that we have to replace that infrastructure. That's the challenge, that is hard, and there's a risk that replacing the pipes might result in some tree loss. It's going to be expensive, there are real challenges when we replace that infrastructure. But the incredible opportunity that we have when we do that necessary work of city maintenance is that we get to decide how we want to build the street back and how we want to build these major arterial streets in our city moving forward. So the opportunity to build a safe, family-friendly, climate-friendly transportation route where families like mine will be able to bike down Summit far more safely than they currently can, I think is an incredible opportunity to come out of this challenge.
Carolyn's asked for a rebuttal, but first, we're gonna give Cole an opportunity to respond.
Sure. So, um, I'll start with a quick story. So I was very excited, took my daughter on bike, I, my bike's outside to Grand Old Day. I live at Fairview University. And Carolyn's absolutely right, there are not a lot of safe north-south routes. Um, Snelling is very scary, so I take Fairview. I, that's very conservative, it's very, very dangerous on Snelling. Um, so I take Fairview. Fairview to Grand Old Day on Summit Avenue was a disaster for my daughter in a bike trailer. She nearly bounced out. And that's not what good infrastructure looks like. And the city should not be lying to people or hiding facts when they're asking the city for information about what's going on. The reason why the city's being sued by Save Our, you know, Save Summit Avenue is not because, not entirely because either one is right, but St. Paul didn't do its job in disclosing information that belongs to us. That's fairness, and that's my biggest concern with this whole process.
Carolyn?
That's true. Um, the Data Practices Act, um, win for the SOS group did come, it was a landmark case. Um, they, uh, the city was fined thirty thousand dollars because the judge found them in arrears of, uh, not responding sis- uh, quickly enough to the data request. But the rebuttal is, Summit has been repaired many times. I was living on Summit and witnessed one repair, one summer. Um, the whole road was dug up, and that was in two thousand. Western End Seventy-Nine, I could give you all the years, but that is a flat-out falsehood.
Molly's asked for rebuttal, Molly?
Just wanna add one piece into this conversation, which is that people are asking, what is the, kind of, where are we in the Summit Avenue regional trail process? So this plan was approved several years ago by the city council. It's been approved by the Met Council. There have been layers of public scrutiny here, and while I think we can always look back and find ways to improve our process, sometimes we have to move forward, and I think on this issue, we have to find a way to move forward in order to tackle the many other issues that are facing our city.
Carolyn's asked for another rebuttal, Carolyn?
Um, I think you need to move forward with a plan that is just and accurate and the bet, providing the best service possible to our city. Um, if you need utility sewer, water, um, redone, there's something called horizontal directional drilling. It's a more modern road construction technique, which our city should be adopting. I just witnessed a project in St. Louis where they were doing it, and it is so quick, and it costs our taxpayers less, and it's less disruptive to the community.
We're gonna move on to Cole. Cole, we're gonna start with you on this question. Do you believe that the city council should play a role in addressing human-caused climate change? If yes, how would you address the issue as a member of the city council?
One hundred percent. And that is exactly why I refuse any donations from fossil fuel companies that power our city and pollute our air. Uh, this is just a sheer fact. We are living with the consequence of over a hundred years of fossil fuel burning in our community, in our nation, in our world. They have something to contribute to fixing it. You know, the franchise fee in our city is our vehicle to reclaim some power and resources to do right by our neighbors. You know, when we think about the folks who are most affected by climate change, they're the people who are living in older homes. They're folks who have leaky roofs, old windows. Those are the drains on our electrical grid. They're the reason why we spend so much on natural gas. And they're the most of cost-effective solutions. So absolutely, the city should be involved in addressing climate change, because if we don't, we're leaving money on the table from good investments in things we know work.
Chantel?
I mean, yeah, everybody has to get involved in it, because everybody was involved in the crumbling, right? And so, um, some of the thing, the question is, some of the things that we can do to, to change it? I mean, I think that we can really look at some of the codes. Um, environmental work is not my, my jam, I'm definitely social justice, but we can look at some of the codes around, um, the use of gas stoves is what I'm learning is a issue. Um, there's definitely, uh, spaces that are burning way too much fossil fuel. But really, what we need is more green space. We need more green space, we need more gardens, we need more opportunity to eat food that's still alive. And what I mean by that is food that has been picked off the vine. Like, what we're eating out of these grocery stores often isn't food that's actually alive. But we need more garden spaces, and we need more green space, and we need more trees. So it, like, blew me to hear nine hundred and fifty trees? That just felt like my lungs collapsed in the conversation.
Carolyn?
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah.
The burden of being the fourth one.
No, you're all good. Do you believe that the city council should play a role in addressing human-caused climate change? If yes, how would you address the issue as a member of the city council?
Yes. Um, I'm hearing that a lot of people want composting, like they do in Minneapolis, right? That should be an easy one that we could get done. Um, anything that focuses on making us all environmental ambassadors and making it easier, making it easier to walk around our city, making it easier to bike, and that doesn't always mean plowing down trees to make a bikeable trail. But, um, and preserving trees, having a strong tree preservation policy. We do not have one. Wayzata, Excelsior, Minneapolis, Woodbury, everybody has strong tree preservation policies, and we don't. So we need to think, save the trees first, and how can we work around them? Because they do yeoman's work. They filter our stormwater, they store carbon, they filter and emit oxygen, and they're cooling, and they add beauty and add to our health and calming.
Molly?
So when it comes to municipal emissions that impact human-caused climate change, there are two primary sources, cars and buildings. So when we think about what the city can do, we need policies that make people less dependent on cars and that make our buildings cleaner. On the buildings front, our new buildings are doing great. We have strong codes, we're making sure that they are meeting environmental standards. We have a lot of work to do on our older buildings. There are two policies that the city has, power of homes and healthy homes, which help people weatherize and electrify. We need to continue to invest in those, while also building a plan to move at scale to geothermal energy, which is ultimately, along with electric, our best option for reducing emissions from buildings. On the, on the cars front, we need to reduce the number of trips that people in St. Paul are taking in cars. We have to be investing in multimodal transit. I am so excited about the B-line and other rapid transit options that are coming into our city. We are obviously here right off of the Green Line, we need to do more of that.
Molly, Molly, we're gonna stick with you for this next question, it's about vehicles. Would you support more electric vehicle infrastructure?
Absolutely. Electric, so, to, maybe to finish my last point. We know that we need people to rely on cars less than they do. And also, as somebody who loves to drive to Montana for summer vacations, it, we know that people are going to continue to drive cars. How do we make sure that those cars are as clean and environmentally friendly as possible? Electric vehicles have to be a part of what our future looks like. We know that the federal government is slashing investments in electric infrastructure, in our vehicle charging stations, et cetera. So we are going to have to fill a big gap in order to not completely backslide. I think that there are real questions about what does that investment look like in this moment as compared to other climate change policies that the city can be adopting? But absolutely, the city should be prioritizing making it easier for folks to drive electric cars.
Cole?
Yeah, I think investing in electrical infrastructure for cars is a good idea, it's kind of where cars are going. Um, now, how we do that is really important, because a lot of the infrastructure we have right now is oriented towards the communities that already have access to electric cars. We're not incentivizing anybody who lives off of Snelling or out of the nice parts of town um, to give one of these EV cars a try. It's kind of hard to park it and get your little free credit and charge it, um, if there's no charger there. Uh, on top of that, we have an incredible municipal resource in EV in our car, in that we have rolling batteries living in our city that we democratically control. When we consider the impacts of climate change, blackouts are something we need to be prepared for, especially if federal investments start dwindling away, um, at our electric infrastructure. We are in such a good position, with just a few pivots, to look at our cooling shelters and other parts of essential infrastructure in our city and use our rolling batteries, our investments, in new ways to power those essential pieces of infrastructure. We can try new things with what we have.
Chantel?
Well, I'm, I'm not big on, uh, the, the new thing. I'm older, I'll just say that. I know I look young, but I'm, I'm an older person. And my daughter told me the other day, 'cause I was, you know, arguing with her about ChatGPT, and she said I was about to get left behind. And so, um, I don't have an electric car. Um, it's not even really on my agenda to buy an electric car. But I do think that we need to create an infrastructure so that people feel comfortable purchasing electric cars, um, because we don't need to get left behind. Um, and that is the direction of the industry, and it also does prevent, uh, does prevent some environmental pollution. And so we should just get on board with that, so yeah, I, I'm definitely down for it. I'm just old, y'all. You know what I'm saying? I wanna still stick a key in and turn it, that whole push and button, I don't.
ChatGPT created my question grid, though.
Oh, man. No wonder I'm struggling. No, I'm just kidding.
Carolyn, uh, question is, would you support more electric vehicle infrastructure?
Yes, yes. Electricity is the future for transportation, for medicine, for you name it, it's the future, so yes. Infrastructure every, everywhere. Um, and I will say, an added benefit, I mean, reducing fossil fuel use, yes. How about the quiet it's brought to our neighborhoods? The electric metro buses, metro transit buses have made such a difference in my neighborhood, it's, it's wonderful. And, uh, so that's, and I, you know, the cars are quiet, too, but I noticed the stark difference with the buses. Um, so I'm all in favor.
Carolyn, we're gonna stick with you for this next question. There's been heavy news coverage of the many social problems on Snelling and University avenues. Obviously, no one entity will be able to single-handedly end societal woes like drug abuse addiction, poverty, housing and homelessness, or untreated mental health, but those are serious problems the city faces. Please tell us how you will work to improve the quality of life for our neighbors who personally struggle with these issues, as well as the neighbors who live on and near Snelling and University who want improvements faster than they see happening.
That was a big, long statement, can I just say that?
Don't make me repeat it.
No, 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 no. You described, described it very well. I've been calling it, at the other forums, ground zero. I mean, this is ground zero, this is our problem to solve as a community. It is everything. It's got the homelessness, the drugs, it's got our beautiful, beautiful light rail that we invested so much in, and now we can't ride it. We've got the beautiful, new, brilliant soccer stadium, but then blight all around it, except for the new sod that I noticed was just laid around the loon. Nice. Um, but all coming at a frustratingly slow pace, and the homeless and the Kimball Court issue. We need to start getting everybody to the table, including the homeless. Leah Timberlake-Sullivan brought that one up, and I think she's absolutely right. Get all the players at the table. Start working on some strategies, give them a try, evaluate them, are they working? Then expand them, if they're not working, revise. But let's start tackling it little by little and get at it. We've been still too long.
Molly?
So, when I think about the Snelling-University intersection, I think both about what an important intersection it is for our city and also about the number of stakeholders who care about that intersection. So we have city, county, state, private sector, nonprofits, multiple district councils who abut that intersection. For too long, I think that the number of stakeholders has been an excuse to point fingers and drop the ball. And what we need to do is make sure that we are coordinating truly and deeply with every single person who knows that, that intersection, that our neighborhood in Midway deserves so much more than we're getting. In terms of what the city can do, so we have the homeless assistance In terms of what the city can do, so we have the homeless assistance response team. We need to fully fund that program so that we can engage in the outreach, the sustained support for folks in our neighborhood. We know that the city, as I've already mentioned, has to prioritize taking care of the CVS and making sure that we don't have vacant buildings at that critical intersection. We need to work with the county, and I will stop there.
Cole.
So there's already group already working on this, and half the folks who sponsor this forum are sponsoring that group. It's the Snelling and University Alliance, which is taking on the exact same approach that was used at Rice and Larpenter, which many of you may remember was also pretty scary for a while. But it was engaging in neighbors, engaging in people, and having volunteers and people who genuinely care about these corners get their hands dirty in making the problem and making the solutions that work. You know, it is a complicated intersection. It's true. But it's been my home since the uprising. I've been there cleaning up trash year after year. My, I have the Snelling CVS on my lit because it drives me crazy. We have to do something and we have to empower everyday people to fix it. You know, from racks at Tuane Auto to the folks who run Dilla, to all the people at the Chamber, there are neighbors who want to be involved. And they are the ones who are already succeeding in bringing the county, bringing public health, and bringing the police to make a difference for Snelling and University.
Chantel.
I will agree that we do need to pull a lot of folks to the table to have a conversation, including the people that are dealing with the issues, the people that are suffering. I feel like a lot of times people are working in isolation and we're not having conversations about solutions. We're just talking about the problem. The problem, most of it is a public health issue. We're talking housing, chemical dependency, and mental health, right? That seems to fall into the category of the county. So, I mean, there is some some responsibility of the city to bring neighbors together and to bring certain entities together to have conversations. But where's the resources from the county to address this problem? Because it is clearly a public health problem. And so I think that, you know, that is that is the biggest issue. I've been doing a lot of community safety work for a lot of years. I mean, we can invest in in people that can make a difference, but there just hasn't been that investment. People are working for free out there.
Chantel, we're going to stick with you for this next question. How do you propose to address the effects of major federal budget cuts on St. Paul's budget and city services?
Woo. Because this is common, isn't it? I mean, you always have to just really look at how can you consolidate certain particular work together? And then, you know, make cuts in those areas, look for waste. I'm coming from a school board perspective, so we've put people on punishment for making print, printing things, you know? From there's small ways to doing it, and then there's big ways where you have to actually cut positions. And often I find that, you know, at the top, where people are getting paid the most, there's a lot of additional positions that are not necessary. And so often, looking at our school board situation, that's where we would start at. We would try to make those cuts happen so that they weren't directly impacting our students. And I would say we should make those cuts so they're not directly impacting our citizens.
Cole.
This, again, goes to my conversation earlier about bringing everybody to the table. You know, we have twenty percent of the city that's not paying into St. Paul. That's a huge number. We need to bring every organization to the table to help pay for St. Paul. Because we can't bat in the hatches. We can't make sure that we are in a good place to consolidate these things and keep essential services if there's so many folks that we are paying for and aren't paying to keep everything else running. You know, and when we talk about consolidation, there's something to be said about it. I mean, I've been looking into the question from folks near McRovlin or out, who's in charge of permit parking and where do my fines go? And as I've been searching that problem down for the last few weeks, I found parking is handled by three or four different departments. So when we talk about consolidation and streamlining things, it's not only good for neighbors, it's not only good for your everyday life, but it's good for the budget. It makes sense. So when we bring everybody to the table, we streamline the things that need to be streamlined, there's a lot of a lot of success we can make of a pretty sour situation.
Carolyn.
I heard from a neighbor during door knocking that she had to call three different departments regarding tree trimming. You'd think it'd just be forestry, but no, it was three different departments. So, yes. Getting value for our taxes, I think we need fiscal restraint without losing focus on those core services that we need. Road maintenance, plowing, sidewalk repairs, police and fire. I mean, we've got to keep those strong. But there's fiscal restraint that we can find in other departments, as Chantel said. I mean, it's going department by department and looking at, are we getting value for everything in this budget? And then I would just say we've got to focus on growing revenue. Hustling, that's what I do. When my business is slow, I get out there and hustle and find a few more projects. I want City Hall and our leadership to start hustling.
Molly.
The reality is that the city of St. Paul can't make up for everything that is happening at the national level. We've heard the same thing from Governor Walz. The state can't make up for everything that is happening at the national level. We are not equipped to provide the Social Security, the Medicaid, the SNAP benefits that the federal government has been providing. So I think we need to be honest with ourselves about the very challenging times that we're in for. I don't want to spend too much time repeating what others have said, but making sure that we are raising revenue in sustainable ways through new development, new investment, through working to find new ways to bring in money into our city is essential. Being very strategic and making sure that where consolidation is possible, where we can cut costs, that we are, that's important. I think we also need to be very clear eyed, both about the groups that are going to be most vulnerable under this current administration, the folks who are just making ends meet, who losing that social safety net at the federal level are going to be thrown into chaos, the immigrants, the folks who are most vulnerable right now, and making sure that we are spending money to support those folks.
Cole, we're going to start with you on this next question. What specific policies would you pursue to make the Midway Business District more attractive for new businesses?
Well, there's there's two. One, we're coming back to taxes, and the other one talks about how we address commercial land, real estate. So first, property taxes. We need to consider whether our property tax system incentivizes or encourages land speculation. In the Midway, there are a lot of buildings that are owned by folks who do not live here that have found it more profitable and easier to raise rents on our small businesses without making improvements and, even better, keeping buildings empty so they don't need to worry about making improvements. We need to disincentivize this sort of behavior, and land value taxes are one way to do it. Another, our administrative citation, something I am proudly championing as a tool that our city can use to hold bad actors accountable. Fairness is for everybody, and we cannot be innovative. We cannot solve our problems if bad actors are getting away with everything and anything because there's no financial consequences to speculating or squatting on retail property that small businesses should be enjoying.
Chantel.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree that we we definitely need to put some regulations around the the businesses and start to find them for some of the issues. And it goes back to my original story that I was telling. I never really got to get to the oomph of it, but the reality is, is that this particular laundromat has been an issue since before I moved in in May. And the community knew that it was an issue. How come the city wasn't trying to send some sort of regulation to them saying, we're going to charge you four hundred and twenty-five dollars to have community safety ambassadors standing outside, making sure that these kind of things aren't happening in the space? I bet you businesses would reap as fast as I'm going to go out there and cut down those weeds in my alley. I guarantee you, they would hurry up and clear out some of the issues and problems that they're dealing with in their with their businesses. I'll get back to that story because it has some real deep history around businesses and the nuisances that we're seeing in our communities.
Molly.
To my mind, step one is work with the Department of Safety and Inspections to ensure that we, as a city, are using every single tool at our disposal to hold these absentee landlords, vacant buildings accountable. Nobody wants to open a business if they are going to be the only business on the block. So we've got to make sure that that is a priority for the city. Step two, we need to take seriously the safety concerns in Midway around Snelling and University that we've already talked about. Step three, we need to hustle. I will take this from Carolyn. We need to make clear that we want this investment in our city. We want small businesses to be thriving. We want housing to be built throughout Midway. So we need to make sure that we are actively reaching out to the small businesses, the people who might want to start a small business, and making sure that they bring that investment to Midway. Step four is we have to change the narrative. It is very easy to talk about all of the challenges in Midway, but there is so much good that is happening in my neighborhood. There is a reason I moved there. I love it. We have to tell that story, too.
Carolyn.
I think we need to do exit interviews with all the businesses that have closed and remain in the spaces that remain vacant with those landlords. Because do we know? I think, first of all, again, in my field, you've got to do the research and find out the why's first. And so I'd say let's do a round of exit interviews and see what happened. We can make a lot of assumptions. I think we might know some of the answers. And then, secondly, make it attractive. Make it attractive by being clean, make it safe, keep the transit clean and safe. We need to invest in law enforcement that acts on things, security that acts on things that shouldn't be happening, and and make it clean and beautiful. And I think you, it would be easier than to attract businesses to the area. I was in St. Louis recently. I rode their metro link several times. I didn't see so much as a gum wrapper on the floor. It's possible. It's possible.
Chantel, we're going to go to you first for this next question. What is one new idea you have for improving our ward?
Well, here we go. Let's address some of these businesses. I mean, I I used to live around the corner from the BP on Hamlin and University. And, you know, I went to a couple of police meetings and said, you know, if I had this kind of activity happening at my house, you would raid it. Lo and behold, a week later, they raided it. And guess what? All the activity was gone. Same thing on Snelling about ten years ago, right across from Taco Bell. Same situation, crazy chaos, kids just all in the middle of the street. I said the same thing to police officers. What are we doing about the owner of the business? They did a drug bust in there. Guess what? Everything cleaned up for a while. Why aren't we holding these businesses accountable the same way that we hold homeowners accountable? If I had fifteen people hanging around my house all day long, I guarantee you the police would be at my door. We've got to do something about that and address it. In addition to, we've got to implement community safety ambassadors in our community to address the public health issues that we see.
Molly.
So two of the things that I think are really exciting that are happening in Ward Four right now are around two losses in our community. We found out a couple of months ago that West Rock would be shutting down, taking with it several hundred union jobs in Ward Four. And we recently learned that Luther Seminary is selling the entirety of their campus in St. Anthony Park. Those are two massive pieces of land in our ward. And how we move forward in both of those spaces, how we meet the varied needs of our community, how we engage in community input, how we think about what might housing look like on these sites? What might light industry and other economic activity look like in these places? How are we taking advantage of these opportunities throughout the ward to really think differently about what our city can and should look like and who our city is actually built to serve? Those feel, those are going to have to be top of mind for this new council member. And I will say, I think that they are two of the most exciting, exciting plots of land in the city of St. Paul right now.
Cole. You're actually up now.
Fantastic. So, well, I don't want to up now. It's fine. Okay, so if you have been reading the Pioneer Press, the Star Tribune, or listening to WCCO, you've probably heard me talk about municipal grocery for downtown St. Paul. Downtown St. Paul is in a unique spot where there is no competition for your municipal grocery store, unlike every other community where this has come up. And we are lucky to be in Minnesota, land of ten thousand lakes and land of municipal liquor stores, where we already have the rules on the books to give something like this a try. I'm a public health educator. I'm a dietitian. Food is my business. Food is my bread and butter. And I, right now, we are holding an empty bag of groceries in the Midway, and it's even worse for our neighbors downtown. St. Paul and its residents deserve better and deserve a city that's looking to go to them with solutions. Go to them to help them fix and live in this city. What's more fundamental than being able to buy some food for your family? You can't do that if you live downtown.
Carolyn.
I think we should take pride, every single one of us living in Ward Four should take individual pride in living there. And that means also taking kind of responsibility for living in Ward Four. We can all help clean up, make it attractive, help our neighbors, be healthy. Take, you know, reduce your car trips, walk more, check on your neighbors. You see an empty storefront, you have an idea, call the city. You can make a connection. I'm all about making strategic, you know, partnerships all the time. You have an idea for making a strategic partnership or bringing in a new revenue source? Call your city council rep. We can all participate to help make Ward Four a really, really shining, the best ward in our city. And it's just so diverse, too. We have a little mini, did I get a stop already? Oh, I didn't. We have.
Now you did.
Oh, now I do.
Now you did. So this is our final question before we go to closing statements. Carolyn, we are going to start with you. Describe how you plan to use citizen input to make decisions.
I'm running on strong listening. Again, just hearkening back to my reporter days, I mean, that's key. I would be strong on constituent services. This is a representative position, right? So I I already have my phone number absolutely everywhere. It's easy to find. So I would be held accountable for concerns from citizens. And you're looking at my, am I answering the question right? Okay. I'm, I'm, I have these breakfast morning coffees every Saturday in a different park in Ward Four. And through that, I've already been approached to help four different people. And I have, I've helped somebody over in Iris Park connect with a county assessor so he could talk about his rising property taxes. I helped a homeless person who was living behind the Midway Griggs Building get an assessment to get in line for a home. And that's the sort of thing I do.
Chantel.
Like I said before, I believe in co-governance. I learned from Uriah Ward. I don't know if you guys know him, if you follow the school board, but he really taught me how to not just practice co-governance, but how to embed it in policy and making sure that residents are involved in every step that we do. For instance, we just wrote a new budget policy that we've executed for the first year. And it it requires every governance body from now on to have to engage three different times with community around the budget at three different stages so that they can have input in how the budget is spent. You know, and I just want to see that our systems start to shape in that direction. And so that's how I would work with community. I would work with community to see what does co-governance mean to the city of St. Paul as a whole? And how can we build it into our policies moving forward so that it remains even after I'm off the council?
Molly.
Thinking about communication and how to ensure that a St. Paul city council member is truly representing their community, I think there are two pieces. The first is the reactive communication. Do you answer your phone? Do you respond to emails? Do you show up to community meetings that folks have asked you to attend? That is all absolutely essential and should be the bare minimum for an elected representative, particularly at the municipal level. But I also think that proactive communication is so critical. Folks can't engage if they don't know what the city is working on. Folks can't engage if they don't know the data that the city is using to reach the decisions that they are. So I think that it is so essential that we, as a city, commit to doing more, to proactively reaching out to folks throughout our communities, throughout Ward Four, so that they understand what the city is working on, what type of feedback will be responsive to those issues, and how they can actually join us in shaping public policy at the municipal level.
Cole.
I was taught if somebody tells you who they are. I was taught if somebody tells you who they are, you've got to believe them. And so, with this campaign, I've been making sure to show my neighbors who I am. I've been answering your calls. I've been answering your emails. I've been knocking your door, and if you're not sure how you feel about the election, I'm going to give you a call, because I am interested in earning your first vote on this ballot. This is what an election's all about, showing people how you will show up for them. So, my volunteers are reaching out. You see my lit? Every issue that I am working to address in my campaign came from someone's front door. I am working to answer questions. I'm doing constituent services questions, weirdly enough, for Ward Four in some cases, and referring people to the city. I'm doing my best to be available and approachable and connectable, because that's what we deserve. That's, at this moment of government incompetence at the national level, we deserve local government we can trust, local government we can meet, shake hands with, sit down with. That is who I'm looking to be.
Thank you. So, thank you to all the candidates. We've used our time for questions, and now the candidates will each have two minutes for closing statements. The timers will notify you when you have 30 seconds left, then 15, and then finally, when it's time to stop. For closing statements, we're going to go in the opposite order, which means, Carolyn, you are going to be first.
Well, we can finally get to the second half of that story. I do believe that, well, here we are. I'll just go to the Cub Foods first. So, remember they had that big active cash checking, money wiring place, you know, inside the front doors? And I'm there to buy state fair tickets, because you could get a discount and bought them for a large group, and I'm standing behind this gentleman who was wiring money, I'm assuming to his family. And he handed over a good wad of cash, and I'm hearing him talk, and he's kind of just jostling back foot to foot. She's almost done with the transaction, and then he just said, "Wait," and then he reaches into the back pocket and pulls out more money. It was such a scene, and I go back to that a lot, and he adds more money that he wanted wired home. And I just think of that sacrifice that he went through, and he thought it through, and he thought, "I can do with less. I worked hard for it. I want to, I want it to go, you know, for my family." And it just was such strong values being exhibited there, and I just felt so privileged to witness it, and that was in, you know, in this wonderful community, and I just want those kind of values to be exhibited by all of us. I want value, value for what we're paying for in our taxes. I want accountability for the services we're paying for. I want transparency, and I feel like those qualities that brought us to live in St. Paul maybe have been lost, but I would like to be your partner in bringing back those values and qualities that we all hold so true and dear. So, I hope that I can count on your vote to partner with you on that.
Thank you, Carolyn. Cole?
I want to open with a question to the audience here. How many of you own your home? Can you raise a hand? Yeah. I'm a renter. If I miss my rent payment, as I did thanks to a confusing problem and an app I have to use to pay, the next day, I get an intent to evict. That happened to me one day when I was bringing my daughter home from school. There was a letter in my door. Affordability in our city and fragility in our city have never been more closely tied. St. Paul is a majority renter city. There is more than half of our city that could experience the same thing I did, but maybe they're on a fixed income. Maybe they owned a home, and then they lost it. Maybe they'll never be able to own a home, because look at the state of things. We need to consider affordability for everyone in this city. Whether you own your home, I hope you keep it. You deserve it, because you've worked for it. That's the American dream. If you can't, it's not your fault. We need to step up to make sure St. Paul's a home for everybody, and affordability is A1 on that list. If you have to go and scrap and figure out and hustle to pay your rent, you're not safe. You're not secure. You're a step away from living on the corner of Snelling and University. That's wrong. When is our city going to stand up for everyday people and keep them in their homes, whether they own them, rent them, or they had to find somebody to live with them? I'm a millennial. A point of pride among us is that I don't have a roommate. I rent a single by myself. That's not what I was promised, but that's the city way it is. So, I'm running to make affordability in a city for everybody the priority of St. Paul, the city we love.
Thank you, Cole. Molly?
So, I just want to say thank you again for everybody, to everybody for coming out tonight, to everybody who put this event together. This was, I think, our first forum of these candidate forums where there wasn't a specific issue or two that we were focused on, where we were just running through a whole array of issues for an hour, and we covered a lot. There's so much that we didn't even get a chance to touch on. We talked very briefly about downtown, but there is so much more that we need to do in order to bring the vitality, the investments that we need in downtown St. Paul. We touched very briefly on immigration, but we didn't talk about the fact that ICE is picking up people here in our community in Ward Four. We talked briefly about public education, but not about all the work that is needed to ensure that students are safe and secure from the moment that they leave school until the moment they arrive there the next day. We didn't have a chance to talk about the fact that the Cub Grocery Store has left Midway or will be leaving Midway. I could go on and on, but I say all of this to say that the issues facing our city, the issues facing the city council, and that the next city council member from Ward Four will be forced to confront are vast. This is a challenging time. There are very real issues in front of us, and with all of those issues, I see real opportunities, opportunities to build a St. Paul that works better for all of us, to build the St. Paul that is the very best of what we all know that it can be. I am, I will echo something that Cole said, which is that I think how you campaign is how you will govern. I have been very proud to build a strong coalition over the course of this campaign, from labor unions to the St. Paul Chamber of Commerce, progressive advocacy organizations to elected officials, building that type of coalition that will be needed to actually move our city forward with progressive but pragmatic leadership in order to get the job done for every single one of our 300,000 residents. Thank you again for coming out, and I look forward to getting to know all of you more over the course of this campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Chantel?
I think I'm going to close out on a positive note. So, a few years ago, I got a national job doing activism work, and I was traveling around doing activism work, right? I was in Mississippi. I was in Colorado. I was in California. I was in Florida. I was in a lot of different places. And one of the things I noticed is, like, when I got to Denver, I looked around and said, "Hmm, is this gentrification or is this development?" And so, I started to pay attention, and it was beautiful. Denver's, have you all been to Denver lately? It's beautiful. So, I was like, "What is this?" So, I'm looking around, and I started to notice that there was people of color living in these beautiful spaces. I went into the businesses, and there was black people in there running the businesses. And I'm like, "How did this happen?" And I noticed, okay, going to California, it's still a little rough out there, but things are developing. Or is it gentrification? Because it's black people that are running the business. So, it's not gentrification. It's actually development, right? How does this happen? And guess what, guys? It was the legalization of cannabis, which is what we have coming down our pipeline, too. And so, we know how cannabis has caused issues on the black and brown communities for years, hundreds of years, right? So, how are we going to utilize these tax dollars in a way that is going to, one, build up our city so that we have development, not gentrification? How are we going to have input from community to talk about what our most pressing issues are so that we can apply these new dollars? We're talking about a billion-dollar industry coming. We're not talking about small money. We're talking about big money coming. So, we really have to get involved in that, and the way that we do that is through co-governance. It's us working together with the city council, with the state, with the county, with everybody who's getting a little bit of piece of that tax dollar, and having a say-so about how these dollars are spent.
Thank you, Chantel. Thank you for participating in the forum this evening. We believe the success of our city and democracy depends on the values, excuse me, knowledge and commitment of our elected officials. Candidate forums are a great way for the public to hear directly from the people asking for our vote. Let's give the candidates a round of applause for their efforts. Somebody, somebody tell me when Election Day is.
August 12th is Election Day.
Check out the Fair Vote Minnesota website for videos and instructions on ranked choice voting and the League's Vote 411, or the Secretary of State's website, to see what the ballot will look like. It's easy, and we don't want citizens to be surprised when they see their ballot. Please vote. Please urge your friends in Ward Four who couldn't attend tonight to watch the recording of this event on YouTube and learn about these candidates. Many thanks to our cosponsors, the Union Park District Council and the Midway Chamber of Commerce. These organizations will post the YouTube site link on their website shortly. We appreciate our volunteers, Steve, Bernie, and the SPNN team, these candidates, and all of you in the studio audience and online. Remember to stop by the registration table to learn more about the League of Women Voters, and feel free to talk with the candidates. Have a good night.